I call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone who's here tonight and everyone who's watching us at home. And I would like to extend a special welcome to our new mayor pro tem, Mr. Carter. Welcome aboard.
Glad to be a guest in your house.
And, Mr. Allen, I think you have someone also that you'd like to introduce?
Absolutely. Pleased to introduce the city's new city engineer, Ben McCabe. And we could have him stand and get applause, but...
We can do that.
I promise we wouldn't do that. Ben comes to us from City Felton, where he last was the Assistant City Engineer. And prior to that, he was with Department of Transportation, so with MODA. He's raised in Grandview, is from Grandview, and has a latest bachelor's degree from, I guess, what is it called now? Well, it's University of Missouri-Rala, but it's the, I can't, Missouri Tech, I guess, is what it's called. But, you know, work on a master's degree in public administration from University of Nebraska Omaha online. And have two kids. Wife's a teacher at Fort Osage, and will be moving here to Blue Springs. You're in the process of doing that right now?
Yeah, we got an offer on the house where we live last week, and it goes through. We're really looking forward to it.
Welcome aboard, and we hope to work with you for a long time. Okay. Real briefly, our agenda this evening is the consent agenda, which is the minutes from the April 8 meeting. And then we have a site plan design review for Southridge Shopping Center and a master alternative sign plan for the Waffle House. That being said, we'll move to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion on the minutes.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We'll move right into the site plan design review for the Southridge Shopping Center. Mr. Hawley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Before you tonight is a request for site plan and design review approval to modify landscape plan for a development located at southwest corner of Southwest 7th Highway and Southwest Meadow Ridge Drive. Many of you know it, Southridge Shopping Center. The property is currently zoned general business, and it consists of about 4.9 acres. What the applicant is requesting is to amend the approved landscape plan by eliminating some of the landscape area within the islands immediately in front of the building. And many of you were here when Copperleaf Village came through and asked for a very similar request. In essence, let me get up to where the map is. In essence, what they're looking to do is to remove several of the islands up near the building in order to allow parking up near the doors. There are two small islands that are on either side of the main door. And if I can get to this map...
Jim, go to that panel left.
Oh, where?
Yes.
No. The bookmark?
Up here.
No, down, down one.
There you go.
And then open the plus line, because of the plus.
So, we want to go right there. Right there.
And then the site.
And then maybe map of Southridge?
Yeah, there you go.
Let me get oriented here. The map. It looks as though the islands that are being removed is an island in this area. There's an island...
You're in the back of the building.
Here we go. There's an island right here. There's a portion of an island here, and a portion of an island here. And when the architect comes up, he has shaded those areas in, so it will be much easier to pull off of that, off of that drawing. At any rate, the idea of removing those is to allow parking closer to the door in hopes of making the tenant spaces near those more leasable. And in addition, I think they'll talk about some parking issues that they feel they have out there that this will help to resolve. The maps that are provided on page four or five of the staff report, those outline what was originally approved and what the proposed differences will be. And as you can see, really the only changes is to, of course, the parking lot landscaping. And they will be approximately five plant units short if they amend the plan as proposed. And there's a condition that staff is proposing with this particular approval that would have them add those five plant units back in. That's pretty minimal. Other than that, very little changes. There's no changes to the open space landscaping. There's no changes to the buffer landscaping. This is it. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hawley? Mr. Graham?
You mentioned the Copperleaf one. We had denied that one, didn't we?
No, that was approved.
We did approve that one?
Okay.
I thought we denied it for some reason.
There is a difference, though, with the Copperleaf development. That was a redevelopment modification plan. And through the redevelopment modification plan, I think they had to amend that in order to allow for a reduction in landscaping. So there were some differences, but the end result is that it was approved.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Wallace.
If we approve this with your recommendations, are we going to get the As in the...
I was just pointing that out.
I wasn't the only one. I thought it was code.
You can all read between the lines, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hawley. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Please.
This is the building here. North is to the right, and I'm sure you have all eaten at Legend of Asia, which is right here. And if you've eaten there, you know that there's a parking problem. And it's very difficult for, for example, there's a nail salon in there, and there people have to park over here. So I've marked these existing islands here that we're not changing. And this, the dash lines didn't show up very well when we printed it. We're taking out one, we're adding one space there. We're taking out this island. We're taking out part of this island and leaving this. We're taking out this island and leaving that. So the applicant, the owners originally wanted to take all of these out, and staff and I agreed that it would not be wise for people to be backing into the traffic that's coming into the center there. So I, we, they agreed not to ask for the removal of this area. So, and we, first, when we did the landscaping, we had more plant units than were necessary, which is a good thing. And so now we're only five short. We have no problem adding the five landscape units. And appreciate your consideration. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for the applicant? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I did a count. This adds 19 or 20 spaces.
This will add 17 spaces to the total parking. And it will add 18 because I did not count...
This one.
It will add 17 spaces, and it will add 18 if you count the one on the far southern side of that island. I didn't realize they were removing that portion of the island.
That doesn't change anything as far as the recommendations lie. Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Thank you.
Bring it back up here for discussion. Any comments? Personally, I'm not, I absolutely understand wanting to add more parking to this, and I understand taking out the two side islands. I'm not sure about taking out the one right there in the middle by the throat. Not only the coming in traffic, but also the exiting traffic, I think that may create some kind of a tie-up there, but that's just my own personal opinion. So, any other comments? Questions? Motions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Graham?
I would move to approve SPDR, be sure I'm looking through it right, SPDR-3-13-3885, amended landscaping plan for Southridge Shopping Center with one staff condition.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, sir.
Mr. Haney? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That site plan has been amended. Thank you. We'll move now to the master alternative sign plan for the Waffle House. I will leave Mr. Allen, and that brings it up to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. And before you this evening is a request from Waffle House to allow alternative approval of a pole sign at their location on Woodschapel Road and the new Southouter Road. Zoom in here a little bit. Doesn't show quite yet on this image, but the new Southouter Road does wrap around this way. And again, we'll zoom in and show you the proposed layout from the applicant in just a moment. Again, the applicant, Waffle House, is applying for the master alternative sign plan to install a pole sign what is now their southeast corner of their lot, you know, newly constructed main entrance off of Southouter Road, the newly reconstructed Southouter Road. This is in conjunction with the Woodschapel Road renovations. Again, the property was essentially repositioned in terms of its main access based on that reconstruction of Southouter Road. They're proposing that the sign be adjacent to this new entry. It'll be about eight feet in height, 46 square feet in size. And the primary justification for this, applicant is contending that a monument sign, which is what code, sign code currently allows, again, in an administrative sense, you know, by right, would interfere with site distances or kind of site access and visibility and safety for vehicles both entering and exiting the property. For such approval application from Waffle House, we've had here. Staff does recommend the project with two conditions. Zoom here. The primary condition, again, references landscaping. Their drawings do not show really any landscaping around the base of the pole sign. Sign code does require landscaping, but of course, we recommend it's something, again, in agreement with them, recommending that landscaping would not impede in sightlines for vehicles. So with that, staff does recommend approval, that again, they get through, go through standard sign permit for the pole sign, and then provide landscaping. Let me show you the actual, here's the schematic of the sign itself. Again, typically, a monument sign would have an enclosed base, the bottom here. Jump ahead to some of their drawings here. Here's a, one of those kind of renderings. We requested just to show kind of how it would lay out in actuality. And you can see that they include a vehicle here as to how there'd be some site issues, perhaps, should this be an enclosed base. Again, staff is in agreement with that. Perhaps there's some other alternatives. We discussed that with the property owner and their counsel at several occasions, just in terms of possibly relocating that sign, possibly a different type of sign. But again, it is a permissible sign in terms of being a, having an entrance sign, having a monument sign of sort, identification sign along, obviously, their access, but along this street frontage as well. So in terms of having a sign here, it is an allowable use, but again, the type of sign is what they're requesting the alternative sign plan for. Here you can see the difference if there were to be an enclosed sign. I think it's a pretty good indication. Obviously, they're showing that vehicle would be blocked, would not be able to see, should, you know, be looking to turn left to go eastbound on Southouter. Obviously, that would be a potential hazard concerning vehicles coming in this direction eastbound off of Woodschapel. So I think that is the extent of the drawings here. You can see to scale in terms of how that would lay out. It'd be eight feet total. This is approximately a six-foot tall silhouette here, so you can see just how there would be some, obviously, visibility advantage. And here's just, again, this is a general landscaping, but anything low ground cover would certainly be agreeable for placing that along the base. With that, I think I'll just jump back to this drawing for reference sake, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Allen?
I just have one for clarification. I think you did answer the other one, but that's more of a directional sign since their entrance is moved to...
Yes, yes, exactly. But it's, it functions much like any other, you know, think Coronado, you know, Olive Garden, Taco Bell, any of those. It's, it's a directional sign just in terms of identifying where their main access is. But typically, like you saw in the other image, it would need to be a monument sign. So it's like any other kind of monument sign. They do have that other pole sign along I-70, so this is a little bit different situation just because of their kind of dual frontage that they essentially have, because they're on I-70 and they're on Southouter there. So...
Mr. Allen, were there any other alternative locations, look to that? To me, it seems like if they moved it just a little bit more, like where the edge of that fencing is or something like that, it would be much more out of, out of the sightline, but yet still...
We discussed that with their, I believe with their legal counsel, and I'll defer to Mr. McDonald if he has additional information. But I think there was some, this is, again, just one vantage point. Should he be driving due east, in other words, kind of turning about 30 degrees to the right, if this were backed up more, it may actually impede and not be as visible through that fencing. So that was, I think, some of the issue there. And the topography also comes into play.
Mr. McDonald?
Excuse me. We had to condemn some of the property in front. You know, you used to get into Waffle House off of Woodschapel, and we had to take that entrance and move their entrance around back. They are generally very concerned about not having any kind of signage that can be seen from down on Woodschapel. So this is pretty much where they wanted it. We couldn't talk, I couldn't talk them into moving it anyplace else. This is part of trying to resolve the whole matter of the, this is the final piece in solving the condemnation issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, yeah, that's why I think this angle's maybe a little bit kind of skewed. You're kind of going, you know, east, northeast. If you're going directly east and you're on Woodschapel, as Mr. McDonald was saying, if it were pushed back further, it'd be more difficult to see from that area.
Do you have a question? Yes, Mr. Trozen.
So this complies with the setback requirements for a pole sign?
For a pole sign?
Was that what it's being...
Oh, yes. Let me see here.
I mean, that's what we're considering of the pole sign. I guess the concern was, I thought that the setbacks is from the edge of the sign from the property line.
Yes. And it does not meet the setbacks either. Correct. You can see it here better. I can show you that. As Mr. McDonald stated, again, because of the condemnation, there was limited room. I don't think it shows it very well. Zoom in here. Bob, if you recall how far that is?
Yes?
When we take property, it affects the setbacks. We can't take property and then require the same setbacks that we required before. I mean, this is, we put a road in there, we're in the back of their building, basically, and so it's a very unusual situation.
But yes, that's correct. We, I don't want to say we downplayed that part of it, but because of that rationale, simply it being out of the right-of-way was sufficient in this situation. We're looking at other signs. I know Jim can attest to that, too. Along further south on Woodschapel, existing signs, moving, removing signs, relocating them. I think, Jeff, you remember some of those as well. Some of them are getting very close, and we may have to move some signs just because we don't want them to be in the right-of-way. So at this point, I'm not saying the standard's been lowered, but because of the situation, if it's out of the right-of-way, that's a victory, to be honest, because just the tight, as you can see here, the tight location for some of these is really a challenge, especially when you start talking about, again, further on Woodschapel, you're adding sidewalk, you're taking property for public use, and all of a sudden, you're encroaching on that existing sign that was barely meeting setbacks in the first place.
Yes, Ms. Duhon?
Is there going to be any kind of a requirement, or has there been thought put into it, maybe some low-line, some type of landscaping around there to kind of give it a little better eye appeal towards the bottom?
Yes, and that is the only, or excuse me, that's the second recommendation here from staff, is that the applicant landscape around the base of the sign. They kind of show just a generic version of that here, but obviously, something, I think, a little bit less wild in nature would be agreeable. But it's something we'll work with them as they go through the sign permitting process to ensure that there's something located there, obviously, that wouldn't be impeding and defeating the purpose of having this, you know, clear vision here. Absolutely.
Mr. Carter?
I just have a question, just looking at the picture. You show a car, and it's got clear vision. I just wonder if you're looking at an SUV or a taller truck, if you're basically going to be looking right into that sign as you're turning right?
That was a question, yes, staff had, and perhaps the applicant can respond to that a little bit more. I agree that there's a, you're essentially only looking at about six feet of clearance there, and yes, that is a low-line Camaro or something like that, that obviously is going to have a little bit better visibility along here. But I guess I'll defer the applicant to explain that part of it.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
All right. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come up and make a presentation?
My name's Wes Brew at Waffle House, and I apologize, but I did come to this meeting unprepared. I was given this duty this morning to attend this meeting, so. I've been the franchisee of this restaurant for the last 10 years up until November, and I'm, I'm agreeing with what Waffle House is trying to do. I mean, that's a pretty scary turn right there, trying to get out if you're going to go back to the east. It's a, I believe the safety of that sign's going to be much better than the other. I did not think about the SUV question, and it's a good question, so I don't know if that sign can be a little higher, or if it's, you know, if there's a standard height of that sign.
Certainly, I mean, that's certainly within the discretion of the planning commission to look at a taller sign, should that be an issue. I think the overall height was trying to keep it within that 10-foot, excuse me, eight-foot, I should say, eight-foot height, which is the maximum height of a monument sign. So that was the idea there. And I, again, I'm not sure if they were considering SUVs or trucks or anything like that, but eight feet is the maximum height. So I don't know if they would have to request additional relief from that.
Well, actually, 35 feet is the maximum height of a pole sign. And initially, they would have been happy to make it taller. We tried to keep it lower. I don't know about the question about the SUV. I don't know if you could sit, you sit somewhat higher, but you don't sit as high as an SUV looks, but, you know, I would assume they would be willing to raise it if that's what you wanted, because they wanted it higher to begin with.
So yes, that was essentially the compromise, was to try to meet as many of the minimum standards as possible. Obviously, they couldn't meet the setback, as Commissioner Trozen mentioned, but they're trying to meet the square footage, the height of what a normal monument sign would be, just essentially looking to remove that cladding, that base at the bottom. Was, again, is agreeable to Waffle House? If there's a concern that it would need to be higher, we'd be kind of left to guess as to what that amount would be. But yes, as Mr. McDonald stated, any pylon sign or pole sign should say, can go up to 35 feet.
Okay. Thank you. I guess that would be something that we could set some guidelines if we chose to do that. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll bring it back up here for discussion, and I will say that I've had several comments from patrons over the last couple of days that say that that definitely is a corner that they are very cautious of, and they want to make sure that whatever we do does not impinge on their, on their site. So I definitely would like to keep that in mind.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
It was an engineer that drew this up. Now whether that, you know, I don't know what things he was considering, because he was in Alabama, but that's where, that's who did the pictures and the stuff like that of the, of the site.
I've seen several close calls myself at that site there from people coming in and out and not really, I don't know if they're not paying attention or just not seeing, but very near collisions there already. So I've seen some concern with the height of that site and the visibility, not only of the people right there coming out of the drive, but the people as they come around that curb where that other fence is, being able to see what might be right around the curb. I don't know. I can see some potential issues there.
Do you think it would... Mr. Allen?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, other than to say that Section 407.120 talks about corner visibility, just speaking with Jim here, that essentially that on corner lots, just generally speaking, nothing shall be erected, placed, planted, or allowed to grow in such manners to materially impede, materially impede vision between the height of two feet and eight feet above curb grade. So that's, that's where we kind of generally draw our, you know, like the landscaping they would, they would install should not be more than, you know, grow to more than two feet in height, and therefore, possibly the bottom of that sign should be no less than eight feet in height. If you're going off of, you know, how we look at other corner, you know, plantings that, you know, shrubs, people have shrubs planted at a corner lot or something like that.
So if we're looking for that site window, it would be between two feet and eight feet?
Two and eight feet is what we're talking about here now, again...
Which, to do that, would require raising that up another four feet, basically.
Two to four feet.
Because the sign itself is four feet right now, so...
Oh, is it four? Okay. Sure.
So we'd have to raise it up four feet to get it to eight, to get to the bottom of the sign to be eight feet above the ground.
Right.
Yes. Definitely would alleviate some of that larger vehicle, taller vehicle issues. Any more comments or motions, additions to the staff recommendations?
Would you like, you can do it?
No. I'm just going to make comments.
I can't do it, so.
Four feet to the top of that sign is not very tall, really, when you think about it. I don't see, you know, I think we raised, raised that sign at 12 feet.
And we, and we do have monument signs that are that tall, but they're just set back further from the street. Because you can, you can increase the size of monument, the height of a monument sign with further setback, which again, in this case, is not, not an option. So it wouldn't be the first time we had a taller monument sign.
Go ahead.
Mr. Graham?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve ASP-3-13-3875, master alternative sign plan for Waffle House with the two staff conditions and include a third stating the bottom of the sign would be eight feet above ground, giving the overall height of the sign 12 feet.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. And that alternate sign plan has been approved. Thank you. And we move on to other business. Got a couple of things. Mr. Allen has let me know that we do need two planning commissioners who need to volunteer for the CIP plan review. Mr. Allen, if you, or Mr. Holly, if you want to talk about that for a second?
Really, the main difference this year is that rather than rating projects, really, we're just going to do a review of projects. The reason that we switched that was because we weren't seeing a lot of value in the rating that we were doing at this particular time, because our CIP budget is so tight and it's so oriented to maintenance projects that are really unavoidable projects. So rather this year, we're asking for the committee to just review the projects. We will have the directors come in and talk with them about their projects, and they can ask questions if they have questions. And any comments will certainly, you know, certainly forward along with staff reports that goes forward to the planning commission and city council, but, so there's a little less work this year. This year, it's just reviewing projects.
And we're probably looking at a meeting of a couple of hours or something, is that?
At the most, at the most.
And you need, Mr. Trozen has volunteered.
Thank you.
Oh, and Ms. Banks also said she would, so. So there you have two. And Ms. Duhon? Would you like to fill us in on what you found in Chicago?
My wonderful trip to cold Chicago. I think winter follows me. Yeah, winter follows me everywhere I go. It was, it was a very, very awesome trip. I am very, very glad that I went. I learned a lot. A lot of the sessions that they had fit right in with what we're doing in our city right now. The revision of the comp plan, how to get that out to the community, get the community involvement in it, what makes a good community, how to get the neighborhoods where the people want to be there and stay there and build their life there. So it was very informative, very interesting. From the standpoint of being a commissioner itself, I heard a lot of talk about several of the communities and the cities are requiring their new commissioners to go through training before they're allowed to vote. Heard some good stories on that one. I will say, as far as the commissioner breakfast went, I was really gung-ho and was one of the first ones down there, and I think there was less than 20 people in that whole room at 7 o'clock in the morning. But that was okay. It was still a very interesting time, met some really neat people. On a little lighter side, I thought it was kind of comical. One of the sessions, or well, a couple of the sessions that they had was called speed dating, and so some of us decided to wait until the end to see what that was, and of course, it was really nothing about dating people, which we didn't really expect it to be, but it was kind of cute. And at the awards banquet, the table that we sat at, we seemed to be flooded with three commissioners from Australia. And so that was very interesting, and before we left, I asked one of them, I said, "So are you guys trying to plan one of our national conventions in Australia?" And their comment was, "Yes, that was in the working," so I handed them my card and told them to keep me informed that that was whom I wanted to go to.
We have budget for that, right?
It was, it was a very, very beneficial time for me as a commissioner, very informative, lots of ideas, getting out to the neighborhood and things that people did that have worked. Very, you know, very, I think it was very awesome that I got to go. I appreciate it.
Did you bring anything home to share with us or anything?
I have lots of PowerPoints that I have printed off and things like that, and I'll be happy to forward those to you.
Send those to Karen.
Lots of notes and.
We'd all like to take a look at them and glance through, at least, see what the subject matter is.
Yeah, it's awesome, it really was.
Okay, thank you. Also, would like to let everyone know, remind everyone that on Saturday, the 27th, which is this week, downtown is the Historical Society Arts and Antique Show from 10 until 4:00. Not only will there be arts and antique, there will also be music and food, so please come down. All the proceeds benefit the Historical Society and finishing up the depot, so that's very important. Also, I believe on Saturday is the medical drop-off. Is that correct?
Yes. The police department.
At the police department?
Right here in the.
Right here, right here in the parking lot?
Yes.
Between 10 and 2:00 or something like that?
Yes.
No questions asked, just come up here and drop your old prescriptions in a box, nobody's going to know what you're, what you're dropping off or anything like that.
I'm sure that there's something on Channel 7 as well.
Yeah, I was at the recycling last week, and it looked like there was a very good crowd there for that.
We had over 440 cars, which is not quite a new record, but pretty close, so it went really, really well.
Good. We got a lot of things out of town, which we needed to do, a lot of dangerous chemicals, so. Are there any other announcements or any other comments that anybody would like to make this evening?
Mr. Chairman? Just want to make sure everyone did get a copy of, hard copy, of the planning commission annual report. Again, thanks to Lauren Goudy for spearheading that, putting that together. If it's not up, I was just looking here, if it's not up yet, it will be up shortly.
It is.
It is up, thank you, Karen. Probably even before this was printed.
Yeah.
A PDF version of this as well, so you can take a look at it online if you don't want to carry this around and reference it. But I think it's really good reference material, especially just pointing back to how well things are trending upward, or since, you know, just in 2012, so things are on the right track, applications and building permits, so it's, it's just, it's kind of a refreshing viewpoint to look at this and go, there's a little bit more meat to this than there had been years prior, so.
Thank everyone for your hard work on that. You mentioned something to me earlier about May 7th, that we do not have any items on the.
May 13th. May 13th. Yes, thank you. Right now, there, we do not plan to have a planning commission meeting on May 13th, which is, would be the next one. There's five Mondays in April, so it's three weeks from now, but in lieu of that, please plan on attending the next day, Tuesday, May 14th, one or both public sessions for the first kind of visioning kickoff meeting for the conference of plan.
And those are open to the general public?
Will be open to the entire city. 11:30 to 1:00, and then 6:00 to 8:00. Location, we're trying to nail it down sometime this week, so we can get materials, information materials out, invite folks around, but it'll be obviously somewhere in the city.
And as soon as you have that, it'll be on the city website.
Yes, we'll get that out. We've got everything ready to go, we just need to nail down a location that's not too cost prohibitive, so that's our plan right now, since we're going to be having two sessions right away, daytime and then evening. Essential repeats, but just trying to capture different groups throughout the day rather than just have a standard night meeting that maybe not everybody can get to, so. And it is 10 to 2:00 here, by the way, this Saturday, for the prescription take-back.
Thank you. And also, our, the following meeting, which would normally fall on Memorial Day, will be on Wednesday, so mark your calendars for that as well.
Wednesday, May 29th, and that will also be the next steering committee meeting for the conference of plan, pulls you on that, and that'll be at 5:00, planning commission at 6:30. And I believe we should have some additional, I think, again, it's just one of those where we just hit a, hit it funny with the application deadlines for the 13th. I think it'll be a rare occasion to have a meeting that we don't have applications, so the 29th, I think we're expecting quite a few by then, at least in the works right now.
Good, we like to keep busy.
Yes, and then the flip side, though, again, a lot of it is projects that you've already approved, they're finally getting built, so things are still happening out there, it's just you've already seen them, so that's what's happening.
Yes.
A lot of these dates, if you would just look at the plan notes that go out this week, they've been adding a lot of the dates that are upcoming meetings, so let me know how you think about the new, what you think about the new plan notes, please.
Okay. There are no other announcements, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.